And go ahead.
It is six thirty P M. And I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting over the Winona City Council. This evening during my comments, I have Mayor's proclamation regarding National Child Abuse Prevention Month. National Child Abuse Prevention Month is a major reminder that not every home is a haven of acceptance and unconditional love. Too often, childhood is murder with pain, violence, neglect, and abuse, which can have lifelong psychological, emotional, and physical consequences. And no fault of their own, some children are subjected to the most depraved forms of child abuse and neglect without reprieve. And sometimes without any knowledge that they that they are being maltreated. The statistics are shocking. According to all children experience some form of child abuse or neglect in their lifetime. The financial consequences of this depravity are dire. By some estimates, the lifetime cost of child abuse and neglect is one hundred and twenty four billion per year. The human cost measured in loss development potential and flourishing is incalculable. This month, we honor the professionals, volunteers, and organizations tirelessly to protect at-risk children and care for those who have experienced abuse or neglect. This difficult work is critical to ensuring the safety and protection of our children, to strengthen our communities and to stopping cycles of violent harm. There are no substitutes for caring parents and guardians. But we recognize that friends, neighbors, educators, and places of worship have important roles to play in fostering the well-being of children. They're especially grateful to foster and adoptive parents who open their lives to children in the need of loving and caring homes. We can and should continue to work together to help provide healthy, happy, and safe environments for all children. Now, therefore, I, Scott Sherman, mayor of Winona, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-two as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Read this last week, Thursday evening, when the National Bank, their art is for hands youth art contest. They had presented the winners of that contest. And all the artwork is on display in the Winona National Bank lobby. So I invite the public to go there and check those out. They're really cool. This evening, we also have Monica Morton here to present the election results.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to report to the council that this morning, Winona County held the post-election equipment review. This was a activity required by statute to show the accuracy of the polling site ballot machines. So two precincts were polled from randomly from all the precincts in the county. And lucky for me, both precincts were city precincts. So we did have Ward Four with over eight hundred ballots and Ward, excuse me, Ward Four Precinct Four and Ward Two Precinct Three with about four hundred ballots. So this morning, we had election judges hand count two races from each of those precincts. It was for the U.S. Representative District One and the Governor Lieutenant Governor race. And I'm happy to report that all of the races were one hundred percent accurate. The hand count matched the machine count. So we are happy to report that it is a requirement by statute that every county do this random count and hand count. So good job to our election judges.
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you to Monica for all the work that you put in. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Does Chad have anything?
Chad is online. Chad, do you have anything this evening?
Just one comment, Mayor and Council, on behalf of all the city staff and myself. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jim. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman. Councilmember Young.
Here.
Mueller. Alexander. Hayden.
Here.
Gorzakowski. Rapinski.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item two point one is the Stormwater Management Code update. This is a public hearing, but I believe John Howard was going to make the introduction.
For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation, and then I'll ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. Each person needs to clearly state their name and address, and you will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in discussion by the city council. Go ahead, John. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you before the public hearing is chapter sixty-eight, our stormwater code. There are a number of changes that are required under our MS four permit or municipal separate sewer, storm sewer system permit. And those that that's what's requiring this change this evening. As part of the update, there is some clarification of definitions and other updates to to update our code references that are shown up in the turn up in the text here. But the key provisions are those required by the ones required by the the state. And and that is to have an ordinance in effect to require picking up of pet waste. It is already in city code, but to put it here specifically in the stormwater section as well. The next piece is to ensure coverage of salt piles. They have them indoors. That's requirement. With the meaning, the most meaningful and significant is a requirement to capture the first inch of runoff from redevelopment projects over an acre. Currently, for new projects, we would require a very similar piece, not redevelopment. So that is a new a new development, a new update, and and certainly could impact city projects such as road reconstruction. So that that's, I think, on page twenty and is is the more most significant change here tonight.
Thank you, Jen. With that, I will now open the public public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the matter? Have you state your name and address, please?
My name is Reggie McLeod, and I live on two sixty-seven East Sandborne. And I've been active in the Healthy Lake Winona Group for a while. And I would just like the council to consider the value of Lake Winona. It's probably the most important property in the in the city. People visit it frequently to to picnic, to boat and paddle and fish. And just to walk around or just look at. But one thing they don't do anymore is to swim because it's polluted. And when you see the scum on there and the weed growth, that's a big problem. That's because of nutrients washed into the lake through the stormwater system. That's the main source of the problem is our stormwater system. So there's really no way to cure these problems to make the lake better. And again, this this new ordinance ordinance is really required by the state. The state is also going to require us to clean up the phosphorus and the nitrogen in the lake. And we've done little so far to do that since we've been asked to do it. We've done, you know, something I've noticed the last couple of months that have that that has helped is the city seems to be doing an excellent job of getting the leaves out of the along the curbs and keeping them out of the storm sewer systems. And and that's going to help a little bit. And this new ordinance requiring plans for one acre redevelopment is going to help a little bit. But I'm sure we're going to need a lot more than that if we're going to fix this problem and restore Lake Winona to what it was like even just a couple decades ago. So I'd really like the city council to ask, well, to require us to do better than the minimum. These changes are just just meeting the minimum state requirements now, and it's doubtful that that's going to solve the problem. So I'm just asking you to maybe do a little more than the minimum for the good of Winona and and Lake Winona the park. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Reggie. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak regarding the stormwater management code update? I will ask again, does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding item two point one stormwater management code update? And one more time, I will ask if anyone wishes to speak during the public hearing portion, item two point one stormwater management code update. Hearing no one, I will now close the public session or the public hearing. Second. Second, we have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. All those in favor, say aye. Do you have a question? We're not speaking on this. You certainly can. Yeah, just, you know, after the motion, then we open it up for for comments. Feel free. Yes, any discussion.
Yeah, so I I I support this and and certainly, you know, the speaker should. I supported clean like, but they scattered every every gene. I, yes, yes. The point I want to make here, this is an unfunded mandate. And all of them need to understand, I absolutely support this. It's a great thing to support. We we want clean, we want to clean. Yet, this is, this is a requirement that comes from an unelected state money. MPC, Minnesota Police and Control Agency, to do this. And so I I I understand when property taxes go up, it's going to be bigger catch patients, bigger containment systems that we have to put underneath streets, and they cost money. Absolutely, I support this, but we all need to understand how money gets spent, that these things are not free. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Any discussion, George?
Yeah, just one question, John or Brian. How will this affect housing developments? There's many being done right in town right now, and we do have preventions in place. What does this mean for them?
Really doesn't change any new any new developments. They're already bound by this statute anyhow. This is just for redevelopment, like inner inner downtown area or reconstruction of steep streets and stuff. So existing stuff already had to do this stuff. Or or new new developments already had to do this stuff.
Because you know, in road construction and other other developments outside of, you know, the interior of the city, they're blocking off the manholes, they got bumpers around them to keep.
Control during the project, but this would be more water treatment after the project's done.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Brian. Any other questions, discussion from council? Hearing none? Okay, go ahead.
I I would like to know how much we would collect if the the required size was half an acre, not just one acre. One acre is kind of a big site, I think, especially if we're talking about redevelopment. How many one acre sites are there in downtown Winona? And wouldn't we be better off in Lake Winona if we had a half an acre? Requirement?
You're asking an opinion question. I'm not going to give an opinion on that. Half acres obviously, half the size of an acre, acre approximately, just for layman's terms, is a football field. But you'd be talking to the fifty yard line on a football field would be a half an acre. Your typical city block is approximately two acres, so it'd be half a city block would be an acre, just to kind of put it in perspective. There'd be near area road project that we would do that'd be less than an acre. So far as the city's concerned, you know, city projects, we're going to be bound by it. As far as somebody redeveloping a corner lot, they probably won't even meet the half an acre. You know, that'd be probably your quarter to two tenths of an acre. So if you're doing all the block, you're probably well over it. If you're doing a half a block, you're probably just meeting it. If you're doing less than that, then it's tough for me to tell. An inch over an acre is quite a bunch of, yeah, a bunch of water.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Moving on to the petitions, requests, and communications. Item three point one is the Recreation Alliance of Winona Agreement Report.
For the remainder of this meeting, residents are only allowed to speak if they have a request before council. And I've recognized you to speak. And I think we have Eric Berner from the Recreation Alliance of Winona.
Good evening, Mayor Mayor and Council. Thanks for, we're going to try not to take up too much time. This is our annual opportunity to get in front and talk about what we do, where we work, where we are, where we're going, as far as a nonprofit advocacy organization in Winona. Just really quick, I've been taught as an educator not to read off PowerPoints, but a little bit of reading. You will have a copy of our PowerPoint slide and a little color packet as well that doesn't exactly coincide with this. Some additional information, some data, and some information on us, some light bedtime reading for you later. And our mission, the record, and our mission is to advocate, develop, and support outdoor recreation in the greater Winona area to improve the quality of life, protect our public lands, and encourage sustainable economic growth. Our vision is to make the greater Winona area premier outdoor recreation destination in the Midwest. We're also going to ask to do a little a little group activity here. And so I'm going to read off the user groups that we would like to represent. And if you hear the activity, everybody back here as well, if you hear the activity, any activity that you participate in, I want you to raise your hand.
This includes council.
So this includes everybody. Okay, otherwise, I'm going to talk for a really long time. So this is a social media communication advocacy among outdoor recreation user groups, including but not limited to those who now raise your hand if you do one of these things. Bike, road cycle, ATV, snowmobiling, hunt, rock climb, ski, fish, mountain bike, birdwatch, and paddle. You have to leave your hands up.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Everybody.
Okay.
Ah, well, yeah, everybody. Amazing.
Laura?
Yeah.
I am.
Yeah.
You're talented. Okay, good.
Just a little activity to show that sometimes when we hear outdoor recreation, don't realize that it actually touches a vast majority of us. Over seventy percent of those in Minnesota and the United States participate in outdoor recreation in some form or fashion. We're an advocacy group as well, and advocacy work is difficult. Let's get paid a hundred percent of the money that we bring, both from city funds, funds that we raise as well. It goes right back into outdoor recreation, whether it's into the form of infrastructure or if it's into us providing insurance for volunteers so they're covered and protected when they help us on trails as well. But none of it goes to us. So we are an all volunteer nonprofit. And so being an advocacy organization, advocacy work is hard. It's hard to find people that even understand what advocacy work is. There's a lot of different prongs to it. Sometimes that means that like we have to have difficult conversations with other user groups, with land managers. Here in Winona, we have city, state, and federal land managers that we work with as well. And so it's really a goal of ours to try to bridge those gaps. And ultimately, one of the reasons that the Rec Alliance was formed was to try to ease city staff. So there wasn't all of these different user groups coming to the city, asking questions that we might know the answer to so that city staff can continue to do their job. And they don't they don't get bogged down in meetings, answering questions that we might have the answer to. That's a that's a goal of ours that we're still trying to work towards as well. Why outdoor recreation is important, it's the third largest economy in the United States. Seven point six million indirect national jobs, eight hundred and eighty-seven billion dollars a year is generated by outdoor recreation. Just in Minnesota, over a hundred and forty thousand jobs are created through outdoor recreation. That is more jobs than healthcare and hospitals provide in the state of Minnesota. It is more jobs than the automobile industry, more than the pharmaceutical industry, more than the real estate industry. So the only things that beat outdoor recreation as far as an economy is health insurance and healthcare, which those two are intertwined in our country. In addition to that, we've printed out these, so you can see some of this data as well. That is this important. It's important because the outdoor recreation economy for Winona is largely the most untapped and sustainable economy in Winona. It also is the fact that we have these raw materials in Winona. We have the river, we have the bluffs, we're an island, we have the lakes. We have the raw materials to really create that that destination that we have in our mission and our vision. And we have the opportunity to draw from other communities. Sometimes people make the joke that Winona is ten years behind the rest of the world. But that's a great thing, because if we are behind, which I don't particularly agree with that, but if we are behind, we can steal all the things that people are doing. Right? But then we can also identify the things that they're not doing. And that allows us to leapfrog, right? So we're in a really good position. And it's a sustainable economy. We are not crack sand mining for unsustainable jobs. This is something that is, we want to bring more people here. What do we have? A two percent population decline every year for our demographics? So Winona is not growing, right? We're getting smaller. So we need to find ways to recruit new talent and retain people here. This is what they look for. The data shows it. You all, you all, meaning the city of Winona, give us six thousand dollars a year, a year, and we try to leverage that and make that something is a greater value value than six thousand dollars a year. Things that we spend money on for that is trail tools. So managing the Sugarloaf Trail, our main task is to manage the Sugarloaf Bluff area. So the Sugarloaf Bluff, the saddle, and the bluff adjacent to it, which is where the the ice park is in the winter and which will be a beginning or ending point for the Bluff Traverse once that's completed. So we manage that trail, we manage the Sugarloaf, the trail, the graffiti removal, all of that stuff. So we need tools, things to be able to clean out all the drains that we put in on the Sugarloaf Trail so that there's not erosion with all the large rain events that we see increasing more and more. We have a lot of volunteers on our volunteer day that we have every year. This one, which is always on the last Saturday of October, we had sixty-six volunteers show up to help remove buckthorn, restore prairies, trail erosion mitigation, making new benches, creating a park basically in an area that was kind of forgotten. The one in Ice Park with the infrastructure, all of the pipe and the yellow mine and the showerheads. Again, volunteer insurance and then signage, wayfinding and signage and that. Like those of us who grew up here, live here, lived here for a long time, we know how to get around. But believe it or not, people get lost in the bluffs. It happens all the time. So having wayfinding and then for visitors, when they can come and have a clean experience, where they know exactly where they are, how to move around, orient themselves, that's really important. And then we have a dedicated team of of ice farmers who put in thousands of hours to create the Winona Ice Park, and they need personal protective equipment and different soft goods as well. Projects that we work on here, the Sureville Trail Management Graffiti Removal is something that we're pretty passionate about. We don't like to give them any satisfaction. When we see graffiti up on the Sugarloaf, we're usually up there within twenty-four to thirty-six hours, and we scrub it so that they can't go and get their friends and bring them up there to show them their newest latest mural. And so we try to stay on that. And you will Sugarloaf Bluff Volunteer Day and then Ice Park Bluff Prairie Restoration and invasive removal is something that I think is really amazing. The where that bluff for the Ice Park is was kind of a forgotten area. It has a beautiful oak savanna prairie on top that was completely overgrown by buckthorn. This year, there's potential that we'll actually start burning that prairie. It's a it's a direct example to show how outdoor recreation can lead to conservation. And there's some people who don't understand that. But when you invest in user groups and user groups get something of value from the public lands, we're more than happy to give back. Those sixty-six people, many of them came from as far as Chicago, Minneapolis, Madison, up here to work on a prairie. I think that's pretty amazing, and that's something that's worth leveraging from you all with the city in this public-private partnership. Future plans and needs. So Sugarloaf Stairs, the Sugarloaf Trail, and that's part of the plan, but seeing funding to get that done. I think that's something that should be be done this spring. I think city staff has plans for that as well. I've been on a workday at the Sugarloaf last year between nine to three, I counted over three hundred and ninety hikers on that trail on a Saturday. And so it's a showpiece. When people come to town, that's where they go. They go to hike the Sugarloaf. It's iconic. It's a magnet. And so we want that trailhead to reflect our city and our values, I think is fair. The Bluff Traverse project is moving forward. Great to hear. That's coming after us too with the permit. That's amazing. And seeing those key properties being purchased, you know, easements are great, but those landowners definitely want to sell. And that's part of the funding as well that will come with it. The Bluff Traverse project is a potentially transformational project for for Winona. There's no doubt about it. A trail management plan is another thing that we'd like to work with cities. Now, if we have money and we build trails, how is that managed? Public-private partnerships, are there positions, all those, and we're willing to do the work as well. Another one is a water source for the Bluff Traverse. So we're starting to look way to the future here, but there is no water on the entire Bluff Traverse for a plan. And we would propose putting in a water source somewhere in the Sugarloaf Park, and that would allow easier access for water, more efficient use of water for the Ice Park as well. Advocacy is what we do. So other things, we're not just about just the bluffs, but also like the Riverfront Trail. That's outdoor recreation, and that is another transformative project that we would like to work on. We see what Levy Park did. That's amazing, that space down there. And again, learning for other communities, learning how to fund and maintain future projects. And then this is something you're probably going to hear more and more is this term of quality of life and funding the quality of life. How do we fund quality of life in Winona? Are there private trusts, grants, legacy funds, sales tax, or are there federal dollars for infrastructure projects like a new parking lot at Prairie Island that needs to be done as well? Those are things that we're invested in and want to work with city staff. Some of the things that we've done in the past, the Levy Park Boulders, we worked with the city for that, create a new space. That's a support feature for outdoor recreation, Sugarloaf Trail, the one Ice Park, Sugarloaf cleanup and invasive management, Ice Park Bluff Prairie Restoration. We've been lucky enough to leverage work in the outdoor industry to bring groups like the Access Fund Conservation Crew every year and work with the American Alpine Club as well to bring groups here to help those dollars go even further. I also just wanted to take a minute to talk about the one on Ice Park because it's a big deal. It is a really big deal. It is one of the few things that we have in Winona that is of national significance. We have things here that are regionally significant, but this is nationally significant now. We have been contacted by numerous international companies that want to support the Winona Ice Park. People travel last year, people were traveling from Texas to come to Winona. Two separate groups that are unrelated traveled to Winona for a week from Texas. Two groups came twice from Lawrence, Kansas, to Winona. Group came from North Carolina to Winona for the weekend. These groups traditionally would go to Colorado. But what they found was, instead of flying into Denver and driving five and a half hours to Yuray Ice Park, which is the second largest ice park in the country, they found that they could fly into La Crosse, drive twenty minutes. They could get an Airbnb for a hundred and forty dollars, which blew their minds, for a four-bedroom house. And then they said that they could get a beer for four dollars. In Yuray, the house was four hundred dollars, the beer was nine dollars, and they had to drive five and a half hours. And the ice experience that they got was identical for that. That's amazing for us to know. Like, we don't need to know anything about climbing. We just need to know that if people are driving from the other part of the country in the winter, which many of us think is the worst time to be here, that's a big deal for us. And so just to state that, that it's it is an amazing thing, but it takes a lot of work. There's people in here that put in hundreds of hours of their life. They're up there at two o'clock in the morning. They're up there at six o'clock in the morning to make this happen. And it is a real gift. It's an amazing thing that we have. So I would encourage anybody here to try it because it's it's amazing. It's a game changer for living here. So that's just little soapbox on that. What are we going to do this year? Illuminary Snowshoe Event in February, we started Illuminary Snowshoe a couple of years ago. We moved it to Prairie Island last year, and this year, we're super excited to be partnering with Frozen River Film Festival as well, where there'll be Illuminary Snowshoe, people will be able to sign up for guided ice climbing, biking. There'll be outdoor films in a tent at Prairie Island as well, and really getting people like on the river, getting people to come to Winona to not just see the amazing films at Frozen River Film Fest, but to connect with the outdoors and see that. to not just see the amazing films at Frozen River Film Fest, but to connect with the outdoors and see that Winona's might be the best in the winter, actually, believe it or not. We want to work to establish an ADA accessible paddling put-in at Prairie Island. A lot of times when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, we forget about people who have mobility issues in that area. And so we want to see people that do have mobility issues to have the same accessibility to the outdoors that other people get to see. And one of those is getting them into a boat on the river, you know, into a kayak, into a canoe. We want to continue to work on invasive, invasive species removal and prairie restoration up at the Sugarloaf. We want to see that prairie restored. We want to really show that outdoor recreation leads to conservation. And if you don't know, less than one percent of the prairies on the planet are still in, intact. It's an extinct, almost extinct species. So that's something that is worth, worth working for. And I would just say the folks who work on the ice park, we put vastly more time into invasive species removal than we do working on the ice park. It's like eight to one. So just to throw that out there as well. More bike and pedestrian safety and more content connectivity, as well as alternate recreation options, our goals. Working with city and staff to develop more support facilities and assisting local land managers, skier funding for access trails. And increase, increased collaborations with user groups with hosting annual meetups, which we started hosting annual meetups of all the user groups that we could reach out to in the, in the area. So everybody can talk, talk about their successes and their challenges, and so that we can communicate that better to you all, land manager. Going forward, continuing to meet with city staff is a big one. We have a standing meeting with the city and it's a great opportunity to get on the same page that we can advocate things with the right information and put that out to the user groups as well. Try to fully understand the scope of projects so that we can help better and support better. And then just working always on improving communication on city projects, timelines, transparency of issues. Any perceived delays, any of those things, so that we can communicate those better to user groups. And that's it. That's all we have. Any questions?
Thanks, Eric. Good report. Thank you.
Yeah, this was a great report. I'm, I'm always glad to hear what you all are energetic people are up to on that, on that bluff. How many people are in your organization?
As far as a board, I think there's six or seven of us. And, and then it kind of breaks out into committees and work groups for different things that folks are passionate about. So, for example, we're trying to raise more money for T pads for the disc golf courses, because some of them are just dangerous. They need to be longer, they need to be in appropriate lengths and shapes and all that. And so we're raising money so that we can get to help the city replace those T pads. We have folks working on the ADA doc, we have folks working on Sugarloaf Bluff and Trails as well. And then we spend a lot of time doing the really boring work of reading data reports. I was on the phone today with the representative for the Outdoor Alliance in Washington DC today, telling us how we could get federal dollars to get these things done from different acts and bills that are being passed. And so we read data, read reports, we look through bills from the state legislature, statutes, all that stuff. It's very exciting.
Glad to hear that. Hey, so people don't join the organization. They're just called upon by virtue of their interest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, but bird watching, just to see if I was paying attention, but, okay, you got me there. Yeah, that's awesome. I'm, I'm totally into it. So in your, as you talked about facilitating communication among those, those user groups and you listed them and bird watching was in there. And then also towards the end of your presentation, you talked about meetups. So I, I've, I have contact with numerous of, of these groups. And that, that's a theme that I, I think, I just want to encourage that. And maybe if you could reflect back what, what you're doing to, to encourage that communication. Because I, I just feel the question recently, something related to Agaming Park. And, and this person asked me, they had emailed me and asked, you know, what, what's the communication method? And I said, I don't know. So if you could, could just tell me how you're facilitating that and what that looks like.
Yeah, so that's something that's new that we decided to put some effort into this year. So this year we had our first outdoor user group meetup this summer. I think it was in June or July at Prairie Island, and we provided beverages and grilled food and all that. And we had trail runners, we had folks from like Ducks Unlimited, we had Trout Unlimited, those different groups coming. We tried to just do our best to put the feelers out to as many groups as we could find. We hope that it'll grow. We'd like to, to be a bi-annual event where we can actually have two of them. And so, you know, we basically just brainstormed as a group, reached out to as many people as we knew to try to see if we could get as many different groups and touchpoints out there and invite. And there was a lot of people that couldn't make it happen because it was summer. But that's something that we really want to put more effort into, to have that, because I think in any organization, the most perspectives that you can get, the better you're gonna, you're gonna be as far as communicating needs. You know, we don't want to miss a group. So the goal is to get, is, you know, all of the engaged user groups and even the groups that aren't like organized, right? So like the trail running group is, it's super energetic, they're awesome group. They're not like a five oh one C three nonprofit, right? They have a Facebook group and they have a following, but they're an important group. You know, they're getting people outside and they're engaged. And so we just reached out to them just via social media and people that know them. So I think it's, it's gonna be a work in progress of how we can hit people. So if you or anybody else know of groups, definitely we would welcome that.
Good, good, good answer. Thank you. Anyone else have questions?
So you mentioned during the report that the city's contribution to all of these efforts was six thousand dollars. Seems like it's a pretty good deal for the city. And then follow-up question, you had mentioned the easements on the properties of the Bluff Traverse and that. If, if I'm understanding, when we got some of those big grants to work on that project, purchasing some properties was part of that process, is that correct? Or just the easement process?
That might be more of a question for Alicia.
The components, because I feel like there's a time crunch on some of these pieces so that we can get that project completed. Can you illuminate that, Alicia?
Mayor and council, for the two legacy grants that we were awarded, we did not apply for property acquisition with those grants. That was all construction for those grants. So right now we have a few easements in process and existing. Right now, we are looking to purchase property for the future. So once we know exact dollar amounts, that's something we can apply for grants in the future for property acquisition.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Thanks, Alicia. Anyone else have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
So moved, second.
Motion from Pam, second from Eileen. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is to renew the police towing agreement with Borkowski Towing.
Move to approve that agreement. Motion from George, second from Aaron. Any discussion?
George, just like I have in the past and for the next item, the contract is for Borkowski Towing.
Anybody else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Item five point two is the agreement with Borkowski Towing for the inspections Department.
Move to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion from George, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Item five point three is the Minnesota DNR special permit to take the timber rattlesnake.
Motion to direct the city manager to sign the permit.
Motion, Eileen, second from Aaron. Any questions?
George, I see some of the ladies are here that are involved in this. You just want to tell us something about it or? Alicia, could you? There's a law, I'm a signature here too.
Yeah, so is my supervisor. So, and council, as you know, you probably remember hearing about this for quite some time now. We've been working for a little over a year now on trying to get this permit from the DNR. So this is a permit for the take of the timber rattlesnake, which is a state threatened species in the state of Minnesota. So it is illegal to kill timber rattlesnakes, which is why we need a permit. So that if we accidentally kill a rattlesnake during the construction process, that we are covered by this permit.
Okay. Good job. Any other questions or comments? Discussion, Pam?
So Alicia, we've talked about this before, but could you explain to other people that might be interested what you do to prevent the killing of rattlesnakes?
Mayor and council, you'll see in that permit there, we have, there's a, a bunch of different regulations that we have to follow in that permit itself. So a, a big part of that too, I forget the number right offhand, but we have to have a snake spotter on a site during construction. So every day that construction activity is happening, that snake spotter will go out ahead of the construction team. Look for rattlesnakes, shoo them away if need be. And then in the event that it needs to be moved, rattlesnake responder will be called and they will remove the snake from the construction area. So that's one of the things that we'll be doing as well. And then also in that permit, you'll see that they give stipulations like there's no heavy machinery to be used in bluff prairies during certain dates from April fifteenth, I think it is, to October tenth or October fifteenth. So that's another thing that's written in that permit as well, so.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to say Alicia has been working on this forever and ever and ever, and she's done a phenomenal job working through this. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Item five point four is the right of entry agreement for the US Army Corps of Engineers.
I would motion for the mayor and clerk to execute the right of entry agreement.
Motion from George, second from Aaron. Any discussion, comments, question? George, anything to add?
I know we've done this before.
Yeah, we, we also talked about this last spring. This is not an expansion of the area. This is a classical area that was used for, oh gosh, thirty, forty years. There was the attempt by the Corps to expand it, but we talked to council last year and they didn't want to expand it, so we went with the same area. This does have a value. This is what we use for our street sand. So being that we didn't have this and we had to go to Homer this year to get street sand. So it is nice, it's definitely a use. It'll definitely be used in construction projects downtown, so it's nice to have.
Now, do we share the sand with the county too, don't we?
Either this or the tech park stuff, we've been honestly sharing with county. We use their screener, they use our sand, it's kind of a nice handshake agreement.
Right, works out good. Thanks, Brian. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Item five point five is reductions in the twenty twenty-three Winona Transit Budget.
reductions into published, required public notice would be in order. Motion from George, second from Eileen. Any comments, questions or discussion, Eileen?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, as I was looking through these eliminations, it sounds like, you know, it won't dramatically affect the current rider experience on our buses. And just for the public, the, getting rid of the dialer ride sounds really awful, but the ridership has been really low, so hopefully it won't detrimentally affect too many people.
And, and I would note, it's reducing the hours of service for dialer rides, so it's eliminating the evening hours and Sunday service. So just reducing hours overall.
There still are other, the other dialer ride options are intact.
Monday through Friday, six to six, and Saturday, nine to five will still be in service.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Should we wait for Steve? No other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Item five point six is cer- certification of completion, final estimate and resolution of acceptance for well number fourteen.
Motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion from Eileen, second from George. Any questions for Brian? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Start with Councilmember Burge Jokowski. I'd like to say farewell to our sitting engineer, Ryan Miners, and thank him for the projects he has helped me with. And wish him well in the future. It's his last day now this Wednesday. So anyway, good luck to him and thank him for his contributions that he has given us here to the city, so. And also I would just like to just take just a couple of seconds to thank the borders of the fourth ward for placing your trust and compliments in me once again. And I will continue to support you to the best of my ability and be with assistance to you whenever I can be. So please call on me. As the holiday season comes along, it's all glitter and parties and lights and bulbs and all those things. Everybody was a good time. Grief does not take a period out. I just like to offer condolences during this season to the family of Shatter Savant. And also to the family of Brian Holbar, two longtime fourth ward residents passed away here a week ago. And our thoughts are with their families as they continue with their grieving process over these fine people. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember, I did.
Nothing tonight, except really happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Pam. Councilmember Muller.
I have asked about this every year I've been on council, maybe this is the year something happens. I would love if we could look at alternate side parking ordinance, because it is such a tax on people to be ticketed when there's no snow on the ground, and they have to move their cars back and forth. There are other cities that have ordinances that go into effect when there's two or more inches of snow, snowfall. Then alternate side parking goes into effect, but the fact that we have this policy from November to April, it is really a tax. I feel like it's poor tax for a lot of people. A lot of us don't have, a lot of us don't have driveways. I don't have either that I can access with my car. So a lot of us park on the streets and I think it's a lovely luxury for those that can park off the street. But especially for folks who might have reasons that they can't move their car every day and have street parking. That those tickets really rack up. I know that officers, you know, try and, try and go easy on folks. But it would be great if we had something in the books that said that the alternate side parking was not needed unless it snows. I think it's really obnoxious. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Councilmember Young?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Repinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind people about speeding on Broadway. It's been brought to my attention, a lot of people are still speeding now that we're going to start having cold icy roads. I think my hope is people start to slow down a little bit more and just be mindful of the speed limit in the city limits. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. There are two items, approval of the minutes from November seventh and tenth, and the final adoption of an ordinance to establish handicap parking on Third Street.
Motion from Eileen, second from Pam. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion being seven nineteen, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion from George, second from Eileen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.